I'd like to call to order a Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees meeting for February 10th. We will call the meeting to order at 6:30. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Jan Daphne.
Here.
Jan Green.
Here.
Allison McAdams-Heathland.
Here.
Nancy Moon.
Here.
Marilyn Palmer.
Here.
Ann Rose.
Here.
Kristy Schultz.
Here.
Julie Nader.
I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda. I so move. For who's our second?
Jan.
Okay, Jan is our second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Call to the public. Okay, do not seem to have any public tonight, therefore that will be short. But I am the call to the public. I'll now accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. We have seven items. Does anyone wish to discuss any particular one?
I would like for Julie to explain F.
F?
Oh, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Document on net asset distribution and state pool loss from distribution.
Yeah, I know we're getting something, but I'm not familiar with the process, I guess.
Okay, so that is the insurance on the library building and the bottoming of the board and that sort of thing. It is a company that is specifically for municipalities. And so what happens is all of the municipalities put money in, pay for the insurance, and there is a pool that is used to pay out when there are claims. If there are not a lot of claims in a year, there's a certain amount of money that is what they consider to be the cap that should be in the pool. And if they don't have a lot of claims and it goes above that cap, they return money back to the people who put money into the pool. So there's two different pieces to that, and we got a chunk back this year. Apparently last year, there were very few claims comparatively speaking, because this is the largest check, two largest checks we've ever gotten.
So it was good last year and it was better this year.
It was better this year, indeed, yes. So that is money that we get back. And basically what we do is we deposit that money back in to pay for the insurance, which is nice.
Good.
Yeah, for next year.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions on the consent agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Library statistics.
Okay, the first thing I have to point out in the statistics is it looks like the visitor count is very, very low, but that's because our people counter has been...
Caput.
Caput, yes, it took a minute. It died. It was repaired on 1/27, so we just have a very short amount of time on there. But the thing I did want to point out is that we've seen quite a lot of growth in our adult programming. That was huge in January, both in the, we had additional programs in January and the participation in those. The visitors were down significantly, but that was because of the people counter, not because we did not have visitors. But we have a brand-new people counter and we are back in business. Anyway. The other thing that I, that you have in your packet are the volunteer hours. And I have a little note from our volunteer coordinator. We had 41.25 volunteer hours in January, which has a monetary valuation of $1,048. Volunteers helped with discovering, the Discovering Great Artists Program, the Lego Club, straightening bookshelves, helping in tech services, making buttons, including our summer reading program buttons, which we're getting started early this year, and youth services program prep. In January alone, she interviewed six new volunteers and invited them into our program. So we're seeing quite a lot of growth in that as well. So we're very pleased about that.
Thank you. Now, library director's report.
Okay. I have all kinds of good things to tell you tonight. I usually do. Okay, just under general information, on Saturday, January 18th, 2020, the library was closed due to inclement weather. But just as a reminder, no items were due and no fines are due when the library is closed, and we do apologize for inconvenience when that happens. Next item in project updates. The field work for the library's 2019 audit has tentatively been scheduled for March 17th and 18th, pending library board approval of the engagement letter included in the library board packet tonight. Next item, tax season has begun, but the easy availability of tax forms has diminished in recent years. Taxpayers that are tech savvy may not feel this pinch, but it has been our experience that not everyone has easy access to technology or may struggle with frustrating printer issues. For the past few years, the library has had a tax kiosk created by our IT department, which is a computer directly linked to local, state, and federal forms. We provide up to 10 free copies of tax forms through the kiosk during tax season. Our librarians are readily available to assist. And while we cannot provide legal or tax advice, we are always happy to help search for the appropriate forms and print them out.
Do we have kiosks that say that this is all available?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep. It's all, and we do this every year, so people come in asking about it. Now, we've been doing it, I think this is the third or fourth year, Bill.
About the fourth, I think it's the fourth year.
I think it's the fourth year, yeah.
So instead of all the paper, we just take what they need and print those?
We do have a table of paper as well, but what the government provides us has been minimized. They used to send us boxes and boxes and boxes, and they don't do that anymore. They basically just stop doing it and expect people to figure it out on their own. And so what we discovered was, in order to sort of get around that frustration, we created this kiosk and made it possible for people to come in and say, "I need these tax forms," and we helped them print them out and we just send them home with them since the government isn't sending those forms to our building anymore. So that's, we found that to be a great PR thing, and it's been really helpful to be able to allow people to do that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next item, at the December meeting, the library board was asked to approve out-of-state travel for our head of adult services librarian to attend the Public Library Association conference in Nashville. He had applied for a grant to pay for this trip. We received confirmation that he was awarded this grant for $1,500 from the Library of Michigan's Library Services and Technology Act, which is known as LSTA Funding, toward professional development for library staff. This amount will cover the entire cost of this conference, including travel, lodging, and meals.
Excellent.
I'm very pleased about that.
When is he going to do that?
Um...
Month-wise, do we know?
It's a couple of months from now. I think it's in, I want to say it's late in February, early in March. It's coming up soon. Our head of children's and teen services librarian applied for a grant through the Michigan Library Association for a scholarship to participate in their Leadership Academy, which is a four-session training program for library staff interested in management. She was awarded a $350 scholarship, which will cover about a third of the cost of this training, but we had budgeted for that, so it's nice that it's going to be a little bit less for us, for her to take those classes. Next item, every year, public libraries plan summer reading programs to keep kids reading throughout the summer months. This helps prevent summer slide, in which important skills like reading can decline if not practiced during the long vacation. In order to inspire kids and teens to keep reading, we track how much they read, provide small rewards along the way, and have a raffle for gift baskets at the end of the summer. In addition, we host a summer reading program for adults, because another great way to keep kids reading is for all of the adults in their lives to be reading role models. Seeing grownups reading for work and enjoyment demonstrates to young people that reading is an important part of everyday life. Our friends at the library have always been our primary sponsor for our summer reading programs. This year, our business and marketing librarian and our community relations volunteer coordinator have been seeking additional sponsors for summer reading. We are thrilled to welcome Bowman, Chauvelay, and Bi-Credit Union as major sponsors in our endeavors to keep families reading together at home. We're really excited about that. Next item, in the coming months, we will be collaborating with Clarkston Community Schools as they celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Sachavan Middle School building. This will include a highlight of the history of the school, and will invite previous staff and students to visit and reminisce about how far it has come, and this event will take place in the spring. One of the pieces that we are doing is we have a librarian and staff who is researching all the history of the building. They don't have as much history. They're sort of going along and doing their business, and they're not really archiving the history of the building, so she's going back and tracking some of that down using Clarkston News and other resources to create that timeline of the building for them.
Excellent.
So that's how, that's how it keeps them happening.
It's that schools don't really have time to do that.
No, they don't, they don't. But then they want it for the party, so we're backtracking and helping them with that. Last item, each year, the library is part of the committee that coordinates the Clarkston Community Awards Breakfast. This year, this event will take place on Thursday, May 14th, at 7:30 a.m. at Clarkston Community Church. In its 35th year, this celebration recognizes the people and organizations that make Clarkston a great place to live, play, and do business. If anyone would like to make an award nomination, you can do that online at www.clarkston.org, and nominations are due by March 6th.
Okay, thank you. Now, to regular business, which we have a lot. Number one, review of the scheduled network infrastructure upgrade.
Okay. As part of the library technology plan, every five years, the internal network hardware is evaluated for replacement. Our network hardware was replaced in 2015, and technology has changed significantly since then, making the equipment more stable, more user-friendly, and greater ability in the reporting arena. In the 2020 budget, I, meaning Mr. Bowman, who has put this together for us tonight, placed an amount to replace the equipment. He has received three quotes on the hardware, which are summarized in the attached comparison spreadsheet. These pieces of equipment, as shown in the quote attached, also have five-year licensing, which will take us to our next refresh cycle, and includes all warranty and support for the period. The quote that he is recommending is the lowest bid in the list, and this is a budgeted item. And Mr. Bowman is here to answer all your questions. Take it away, Bill.
How many, yes, how many times have we upgraded?
Since I've been here, this will be the second time.
How long have you been here?
2007.
Yeah.
Is that...
Well, the first several years where we were in the getting buy option, so now, now with the actual technology plan in place, like, so we did this in 2015, and now it's time to evaluate. Like I said, the equipment that we have is not as user-friendly for, you know, staff, so, you know, there's a lot of command line things that have to be done, and it's just the ones that we're looking at are significantly more easy for us to use and significantly more secure and higher reporting capabilities.
Is five years, is that too long?
No, five years is a, we look at it every five to seven, so the five years, the first year we started evaluating whether we're going to swap them out or not. So anywhere between five and seven years is usually a good time period for infrastructure pieces, because technology changes very quickly in certain, and it's kind of funny, it will go, it'll stagnate for a while, and then it'll jump. So that's kind of what happened this time around, and that's why I'm doing it in five and not seven, because it did make a major jump over the last year or so.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I'm always happy when the low bid is the...
And...
Always pleases me.
And as an aside, with that, though, the vendor called me yesterday and said, "We're also including a sixth year of the..."
Support?
Of support for all the products that you're giving, so I was like, "Well, that's okay."
That's very nice.
And I do want to point out, in your packet, the amount is $17,200, and in your working agenda, it's $18,215. The 17,2 is the correct number, because that came in at the very end. I'd already done the working agenda, and I didn't get that corrected number, so I apologize.
That's always good.
We were surprised, actually, when they came back. Yeah, we lowered it again. My life would do that. Is the quote from Quadbridge or GHA? GHA is the, like you said, the working agenda may have the Quadbridge quote on it, because at the time, it was low, but they came, but GHA came back and said, "No, no." I got that.
I was building the packet when you gave me that.
It didn't get in quite as smoothly as I thought.
All right, I will accept a motion.
I move that we accept a quote from GHA Technologies for the purchase of Muraki Firewall and Switch products for the amount of $17,200.
Second.
Allison McAdams.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Allison.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the quote from GHA Technologies for the purchase of Muraki Firewall and Switch products for the amount of $17,200. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you, Bill. Number two.
We've not done yet, there's more. This is a complicated one. Okay. In October of 2019, we turned our computer lab into an additional meeting space. At the time, we discussed what sort of technology we should have in the space to make it as flexible as possible. When we installed the Business Center meeting room, we had a Promethean Smart Board installed as its flexibility matched what we hoped for in that room. The Smart Board has been consistently used by patrons as a method of displaying presentations, as a method of displaying library applications for training, and for displaying library digital signs when it is not in other use. After a year of having the one in the Business Center, we think this will perfectly, work perfectly in the newest meeting room, and have budgeted for another Smart Board in the new room. When installing the original Smart Board, the installation costs were rolled into the remodel of the room and were overlooked in the budgeting process for the new board. In addition, in 2017, we installed a system to display library program advertisements inside the library on televisions throughout the building. There are currently two standard television screens mounted in the front entryway and above the circulation desk, as well as the current Smart Board in the Business Center. During late-year discussions with the team, it was requested that we also add a new television to the digital signs above the magazine rack in the open space of the library to increase visibility of the signage. In an effort to save on installation costs, it was decided to group the two projects together to have only, only have to bring in electricity at one time.
Electrician.
Yeah. So the group decided to move the purchase of the television into the 2020 budget year and a custom adjustment to the 980 equipment line to accommodate the purchase. The additional monies requested to be added to this line will be used to purchase the television, the mounting kit for the wall, and the hardware, and licenses to attach all the equipment to the digital science system. So in terms of the source of funding and budget considerations, there is $5,000 in line 980 budgeted for the purchase of the Smart Board. Additional costs were incurred in installation, additional location, and additional equipment. The amounts for each are installation, $3,330 from line 931, building and maintenance, and $2,000 for line 980 equipment. And he is making a request that that $3,330 and $2,000 come from Fund Balance. You're complicated.
Yes, it is. It's a little more complicated than I expected. But yes, so you heard today, so this is where we wanted to add technology to that newest meeting room. And when the Business Center was done, it was rolled right into the Business Center costs, so I didn't realize what the costs were for the installation at the time. So we had to get a quote pretty quickly from our maintenance company to find out what it would cost to not only install that Promethean Smart Board in the new meeting room, the exact same way it's done in the Business Center, which requires cutting a hole in the wall and fitting with all sorts of equipment, but also to add that television up above the meeting, I'm sorry, the magazine racks. If you see the sign as you walk in the front door, that one's very visible. The one above the circulation desk is not as visible as it could be unless you're standing there at the circulation desk. And the thought was that that particular space, where there's currently a clock, would be a great space to put another one, which would be visible quite a ways around, and be where if you miss the one on the way in, which many people do, they're not looking up yet until they walk through, until they get past all of that, when they walk in, they can see it straight on. And we're looking at a larger screen than the one that's above circulation, because that will give us a bigger, you know, space for the people to see it from more, from further away.
So we can roll the installation costs of both the TV and the Smart Board...
Into one installation cost, correct.
That's attractive.
Yeah, they quoted the two together to make it, and then the electricity will come to one time.
Right. Because we had to bring electricity, we had to bring electrical to both locations, and I had to bring data lines to both locations for those things to function properly.
In the Business Center, we have that smart table?
The Smart Board, correct.
Well, that table that directly connects into that, is going to be anything like that in the conference room?
There will be, there will be a jacks on the wall for the, for the two people to connect to, but that room is such a flexible space, we don't have any fixed tables in that room, so there's no way for us to put something onto the floor like we did in the Business Center. So that's what that is, that basically is connected to the table, runs up through the ceiling and back down behind the Smart Board, but no. There will be a jack on the wall, so people aren't running cables hanging across from the table and stuff like that, but it will be directly on the wall near the floor like the ones here.
It's how it's working.
It's similar to how it is working in this room here.
That allows for greater flexibility of seating in there?
Oh, it sure does, yes.
All right, I will accept a long motion.
Or a string of motions.
Yeah, probably it's better if we do it as a string of motions, isn't it?
Probably. It's probably easier to attract if you do them in pieces.
Sorry. I move to approve the quote from GovConnection for the Promethean Smart Board to be paid from line 980 as a budgeted item.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the quote from GovConnection for the Promethean Smart Board to be paid from line 980 as a budgeted item. Any other comments on that item? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, next motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the installation quote from Ally for $3,326.
I'll second.
And there's a second?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the installation quote from Ally for $3,326. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that move, that is moved past. Third.
I move to transfer $3,330 into line 931 from Fund Balance to cover the installation quote provided by Ally.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to transfer $3,330 into line 931 from Fund Balance to cover the installation quote provided by Ally. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. And one more, please.
I move to transfer $2,000 into line 980 from Fund Balance to cover the purchase of the additional television, mounting hardware, and zero client terminals for signage purposes.
And a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we transfer $2,000 into line 980 from Fund Balance to cover the purchase of the additional television, mounting hardware, zero client terminals for signage purposes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Phew, yeah, well.
Thank you, Bill.
I have one question. Any idea when? I mean, is this the next month or two?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I'm going to get, I will place the orders, at least for the Promethean Board, probably tomorrow, and whatever the lead time is for them to get that to me, the thing weighs 250 pounds, so it's being shipped by truck, and then we just have to schedule Ally to come in.
Okay, good. All right, let's move to number three, the approval of the auditor.
In February 2019, the library board reviewed proposals from auditors after an RFP had been posted. Auditors were asked to submit three-year proposals that allowed the library the option to withdraw after the first year if we decided to go in a different direction. The board selected Gavridge &amp; Company. This firm conducted the 2018 audit process in a thorough, efficient manner at a good price. It would be our recommendation that we continue with Gavridge &amp; Company for the 2019 audit. Attached to the engagement letter presented by Gavridge &amp; Company for the 2019 audit, and this is a budgeted item.
Anybody have any questions about the letter? There's a lot of things they are not going to do. I always find that interesting. They are not going to say this or that is good, bad, or elsewhere, we just want a representative...
It's pretty standard, though.
Yeah, that's what they all do. And long.
Yes, they always are.
All right. Any questions or comments?
This is the auditor's responsibility, this is the, you know, your responsibility, this is, they're always like that, they're very...
In other words, our responsibility is to present everything necessary to them to make...
Yep, and we're, we've gotten to be pretty good at that, we're very efficient.
Yeah, and I do concur. I thought it went very well last year when I met with the auditor, asked all of what I thought were all the right questions and...
And it was less expensive than I thought it would. We were a little concerned, because we did go with the low bid, and this auditor is geographically further away, but the service was great, they were very efficient. And this would be our second year, so as long as this year goes well, we still have one year left on us, we won't have to do another RFP for next year.
For next year. All right, all those, any comments or questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve Gavridge &amp; Company as the firm to conduct the library's 2019 audit and authorize the library director to sign the necessary paperwork.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Gavridge &amp; Company as the firm to conduct the library's 2019 audit and authorize the library director to sign the necessary paperwork. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, item number four, we move an approval of remote participation at board meetings policy.
Okay. There has been recent discussion at the state level regarding remote participation for library board members. In addition, legislation was recently approved requiring that a mechanism be in place to allow remote participation in municipal meetings for individuals on military duty. In response to both of these situations, I asked our attorney to draft a policy for remote meeting participation at board meetings. Included in the packet is the draft for your review. This draft of this policy was provided by the library's attorney, answering of Foster, Swift, Collins, and Smith. So this just basically, in a nutshell, I've read all of it, but in a nutshell, it gives you the ability to, obviously, to have somebody on the board who is an active-duty military, which we don't currently at this time, but it also gives you the authority to allow somebody to participate remotely for particular circumstances, if you would like to be able to do that. And you can make that decision as a board, and you can do it for a length of time, or you can do it for a particular meeting, or whatever, but it gives you a lot of flexibility. I liked the way that she had written it, because it answered the law, but then gave you some abilities and you do some other things as well, which I thought was really nice.
It's proactive, and it has not come up yet.
Yep.
No, and it may not for a very long time, but it's nice to have a policy in place. I have been on boards where that is allowed, has been allowed, and it can work. I liked that she put in there that it shouldn't be, other than an active military, it shouldn't be over a long period of time. It is better if people are at the meeting. The people who attend remotely are a little bit less engaged. I had a question, and Bill might be able to help with this one. It says that we have to provide the technology, now would we just use something like...
Like Skype, probably.
Skype or... Yeah, some sort of Skype personal...
It's great.
Do we have to provide technology at both ends, or just on our end? I don't remember how that worked.
I think it kind of implies that it has to be...
It depends on the situation. If it's military service, I believe we would be providing it on both ends. If it is by the request of the board member for other extenuating circumstances, they could provide it themselves, because at that point, it would be by their choice.
Right. And there are other things out there, like WhatsApp or, you know, other things.
There are many ways.
Yeah, but I was just kind of curious if we had thought about what we were going to do to make that happen.
We have held other meetings with Skype here, with, not board meetings, but other...
Have authors participate?
We've had author participations done that way. We've also done committee meetings, there's been some committee meetings that we've held at least where one person...
Your tech coms are sometimes like that.
Well, yeah, and through the library network, we, there's always a remote option there Well, yeah, and through the library network, we, there's always a remote option there, too, and that's, and they use WebEx. But that's, yeah, but we held the, one of the, the website, the, which web, the website we're talking about, the?
Oh, the Community Information Network.
Yes.
Well, that's right.
We held that one where?
Yep.
One of the members was down in Florida, and we had a remote camera and everything so that he could see what was going on.
And we also have, when we got our phone system, you'll remember, we got conference call technology as well, and it does offer conference call as an option, although I think a video would be nicer, but we do have conference call as well, if they just wanted to be able to listen in. And in that particular situation, they might not necessarily vote, but we could set a conference call if they wanted to listen in, if they thought there was something that was gonna be discussed, if they wanted to keep up with it, or whatever.
And sometimes if, and it doesn't typically happen here, because we do tend to operate by consensus, but sometimes if you were going to have what might be a close vote, it does allow that person the option of having then heard all of the discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I just thought this was, it was proactive. Since the conversation came up, I thought, you know what? Everybody's talking about this. The attorney's already writing the policies for other libraries. We might as well get in on it when she's already doing it.
So we'll be prepared.
So we'll be prepared if we wanna do it, and it's on the books, and we can cross it off the to-do list, so.
Okay. Is there any other, or no other questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve the remote participation at board meetings policy as presented.
Do a second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the remote participation at board meetings policies as presented. If there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. The six votes, right?
Yep.
All right. Item number five. This one is a bigger, this is discussion.
This one is a little bit bigger discussion. You do have a handout in front of you. It's the little staple sheet that's got, I've got a little slideshow that is basically those sheets, so that'll make it easier to help you keep up with what I'm talking about. Okay, so, the library's auditor suggested that we have a fund balance policy in place. And basically, what a fund balance policy is, it says that we would have a minimum amount of money that we would keep in fund balance. The other thing that he suggested is that we also consider, because we do have a fairly sizable fund balance, and we have made it clear that we have intentions for some of that fund balance, that we should designate that formally through resolution. Well, that you should do it, not me, but, but I should vote together for you, which I have done. Okay, so the first sheet, and Jeanne, thank you very much for suggesting that I do a little bit of a fund balance refresher. So that's what I'm doing here. So, this first page that is on the first sheet that you have, and the public can see it as well, this is exactly what is in front of the board, including all of my pretty little colored highlights. This is a page from our 2018 audit, which is our most recently completed audit. So the first thing that you see up there, it, this highlighted in blue, is the total revenues, which is $2,032,300. Then, the next one that is in blue are total expenditures, and that's for 2018, $1,818,422. So just to state the obvious, we took in a little bit more than we spent. So if you skip down to the next one, it says net change in fund balance, that's $211,808. The fund balance at the beginning of the period, so at the beginning of 2018, was $1,339,557. The fund balance at the end of the period was $1,551,365. Okay. Any questions so far?
No.
Cool, moving on. All right, so the next thing that's in your little handout, these are the, this is a page right out of this policy, the draft policy that is in your board packet. And basically, what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about the categories of fund balance. And she has listed five categories of fund balance. The first one is non-spendable, and non-spendable would include any amount that has already been earmarked in some way. In other words, prepaid expenses, or that is legally or contractually required to be maintained intact, like principal balance of an endowment. Okay, so we do have some pre-pays, but we do not have anything that's a principal balance of an endowment. But non-spendable is something that you need to understand. The next one down is restricted. And I'm gonna kind of breeze over restricted, because we don't have anything that qualifies as restricted, and this would be a lot of conversation if we're gonna talk about everything that we don't do. The next one is committed. So committed is basically that resolution that the auditor was talking about, where you take some money that is in excess of what your policy says that you should have set aside, and you give it some sort of a commitment. So what we've been talking about in workshops, budget workshops, is that that money is being set aside specifically for the improvements, renovation, and potential expansion of the building at some point. Okay. And what the auditor is saying is, the board should formally say that in a resolution, that that's why we have this money set aside, because you'll see that $200,000 went into fund balance this year, and that was because we are purposefully setting aside money, because the building is 30 years old, and we're trying to do updates and renovations to it. Okay. So the last one, E, unassigned, there in yellow, that is basically what our fund balance is right now. It's a big chunk of money unassigned. Okay? No restrictions on it. Any questions about that? Good, very good. Moving along. I'm gonna see how I can do, making all of that paper in your packet seem a lot smaller. Good. Okay, so this is another page out of our 2018 audit. This is specifically about our fund. And if you look there at the bottom, it says fund balance. I highlighted two things. Non-spendable, we just talked about that on the last page, is $51,502. Those are pre-pays. In other words, money that is earmarked to pay for something that has not yet been paid out, but we know that we owe it. So, that, that $51,000. Unassigned would be the fund balance after you take out those pre-pays, those non-spendables. So the total fund balance at the end of 2018 was $1,499,863. Now, we were just talking about that 1,551,365, but we took out the $51,000. So, that's where we are. Make sense?
Yes.
Cool. All that paper looked really intimidating until I brought it down to this nutshell with a bunch of highlighters. Okay, so this is the last page in my presentation, and this is basically the summary of what we just talked about. So, if in 2018, our fund balance at the end was $1,499,863, and we talked about fund balance being about operating expenses, so right in our fund balance policy, the attorney is recommending that our unassigned contingency fund category be no less than three months and no more than six months of our operating expenses. So, first we look at our fund balance, then we look at our operating expenses. So at the, in 2018, our operating expenses were $1,818,422. We already talked about that once. So three months' worth of that would be $454,606. Six months of that would be $909,211. And then if we subtract that from our fund balance, so fund balance minus three months means we would have $1,45,257 that could potentially be committed. Or if we wanted to have six months, fund balance minus six months would be $590,652 that we might put in committed.
So, perhaps a reasonable amount to commit at this point might be $750,000, which would fall somewhere in between.
Somewhere in the middle.
That's why you're treasured.
So, so I kind of tried to walk you through in a linear fashion through all of that, that great big thick policy, plus the resolution, plus, now, I don't know if you wanna do any of this tonight. If you would like to approve the policy, that's a straight vote, and you could choose to do that. There is a recommended motion that would allow you to do that. If you wanna do a resolution, that would be a roll call vote, and you would need to check, you would need to select an amount, and then tell it what kind of fund, which in this case would be a committed fund, and you could do that as well this evening if you would like to do so. Have I made that clear as mud?
You did.
Okay, good.
That's yours from me.
Thank you. Did I miss anything, Jan?
No, I think that was a good explanation of how it grows, and, you know, what are the options of things to do with it. And I do agree, I think that if, if people, if the public looks at, well, you're sitting on all that money, why aren't you spending it? We need to have it very clear, and having the board do a resolution saying, and whether we do it tonight or do it at a later date, after everybody has time to think about it. That part's not urgent, but, but we do need to be able to say, well, yes, we are sitting on this substantial pile of money, but this is what we wanna do with it, but we don't have enough to do that yet, so.
So, does that mean that we perhaps need to have a workshop where we actually discuss how much we want to set aside? What is a reasonable amount?
And that, and that probably is. I mean, that, you know, mine was just kind of an off-the-cuff, split, split the difference and do that, but I think perhaps a little more scientific discussion.
Yes, I think we need to discuss a little bit about, there's a pretty big difference here between three months and six months.
Yes, definitely.
But, given the fact that the economy is currently in the 10th year of an expansion, which is the longest in the history of where they have been keeping this information, I think we need to discuss somewhat of a conservative amount based on what might be happening in the next year or two.
We've had issues in the past.
Yeah, right. Yeah. And we can always, you know, on an annual basis, or every two years, or whatever, as that shifts around, we can add to the committed amount if we continue to have growth in the fund balance, so.
So we can change it then?
I think you can, you can commit new amounts.
You can change it anytime. It would, it would take an act of the board to do so.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't know if you can take it back out after it's committed, it's committed, but.
Once it's committed, the board can uncommit it, but it would take an act of the board to do so. So you, as a group, would have to make another resolution updating that. You can change it at any time, but up until that point, it would be, it would be committed. I did ask that question. The thing you might wanna do is consider the possibility of just approving the policy.
I think that sounds.
I think we should have. And then maybe, I think a workshop is not a bad idea to further kind of hash out more specific plans of what we might like to do, and when we might like to do it, so that we have a target.
Well, and the other thing that you've got is that these are the 2018 numbers, and we're about to do the audit on the 2019 budget, so, but I use the newest numbers I have, because of the process of prepping for that 2019 audit, so.
So what I'm hearing is that we might want to approve the policy.
Yes.
Then have a workshop in which we discuss more in depth about amounts to be designated for particular.
And I think that's probably a good idea, because we do have the auditor coming in next month, and this, it was a recommendation of the audit that we do put this policy in place. It will score us points on our next audit, following the recommendations of the auditor.
Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the policy.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've had it moved and seconded to approve the fund balance policy as presented.
Who did you take the second? Did you take Ann?
Okay, any questions or comments on approving the policy itself without setting specific amounts yet? All right, all those in favor of setting the policy as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is passed. Do we wanna set a workshop at the next meeting?
I would think you might wanna wait until after we do the audit.
Okay.
So you've got fresh numbers.
Sure, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Do we wanna maybe make it part of the budget process?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
I mean, we can do that. He wasn't really concerned that it happened immediately, but he said this is something that you need to work toward. He thought the policy should be in place, and that.
Okay, let's make it note that we will talk about the fund balance when we're doing the budget.
Maybe the first thing to do is, because we're already have that capital improvement plan committee this year, so once they've looked at the building listing and maybe.
That would give us a lot more information.
I think the two pieces that you really need are more current information on the fund balance, and a clean look at the building, and where we are.
All right. Next item, review and approval of administrative office update.
I left the light off, 'cause I have, I have pictures for that, too. Okay, so first thing, the administrative office is the office that our administrative systems currently share, so that'll be Debbie and Erica's workspace. Couple of things that we've got on the, in the plan for 2020, as we had discussed, we will be hiring an additional full-time employee, a school liaison librarian, and we will need a workspace for that person. And one of the things we talked about in the 2020 budget workshop was figuring out how to accommodate an additional full-time employee. So the proposal and the budget have been written to accommodate by basically renovating the current administrative office. So the person on staff who is also part of the administrative team is our community relations volunteer coordinator, and that would be Adrian. And what we are proposing is that we renovate this office so that it has two workspaces. One workspace would accommodate Erica and Debbie sharing that space, which they currently do share a workspace, because they work opposite shifts. And then the other space would accommodate Adrian. So this is the current workspace. This is the renovation plan. So a couple of things that we've done to make the space more workable, the previous, the way the office is currently is a U-shaped desk, but the U is in the middle, so that somebody can sit on the opposite side. What we would do is take all of that out, make it a U-shaped desk that would allow for Erica and Debbie to have one half, and Adrian to have the other. Because we've done so much with digitization, we have taken some measurements, thank you, Erica, for doing that, the amount of storage space that we need, so we have been able to downsize some of the storage space, because so many things have been digitized. Couple of things that we will be doing to make the space a little more user-friendly. We currently have a safe here, and a safe here. We have two safes. We have one that is our main safe, that has a very limited number of people that have access to it. Then we have what we call, what would be considered a cash drawer safe, which is the safe that has a minimal amount of money. More people do have access to it. It is how we supply the cash drawers up at the circulation desk. So what we would do is, we would take these two safes, put the big one on the floor, put the small one, and bolt it to the wall, and we would put it behind the door. So that would free up these two spaces. We currently have three large cabinets. We've been able to downsize by one cabinet, so we will have the two cabinets on the wall, and we will be one less cabinet. That's what makes the space good, safe. This desk will be slightly shorter, and this desk goes all the way to the door, so we have more space for them to kind of spread out. They will have tech boards and whiteboards and things that they would like up on the wall. A couple of other things that we have done, we will be relocating both the fax machine and the postage meter to an area of the library that is more accessible to staff, so that it isn't living in their office. The only reason it lives in their office is because that's where the phone line is. So right into this budget does accommodate the moving of that phone line. We will be relocating a printer that is right here to the top of the cabinet, so we will be putting in a data line there as well. Obviously, because there's going to be two workspaces, we will be adding a computer over here, and also a phone over here, and then the computer and the phone that are currently here will be moved this way. Any questions about any of that so far? Okay.
I have a quick question. So, will that work out for you in sharing?
We share. So I work Monday, Wednesday, and Debbie works Tuesday, Thursday, and then we alternate Fridays. So generally, not at the same time, and even if we are working together on Sundays, we'll have that corner space over here for.
And Adrian also is?
She's the volunteer coordinator, and she'll be full-time, so then she would sit in there full-time, and we can come and go.
Okay.
So, this is a breakdown of the budget. Originally, in the workshop, we had talked about this project costing potentially up to $20,000 to execute. I have brought it in much lower than that, by nearly half. So the first thing that we did was, normally when we do a library project, we often use library design associates, because they specialize in libraries. In this particular situation, this isn't a library-specific space, this is a workspace. So I called a number of other libraries and got recommendations for an office furniture company. Tends to be a little more competitive, because it's not a specialty, so we were able to find a company that came highly recommended by multiple libraries. The furniture and installation by ISCG comes in at $4,889.49. They will also do the demolition and disposal of the old furniture. Some of the furniture will be repurposed, some of it will be potentially given to other libraries, and the pieces that are in, are showing 30 years of age, they'll be disposed of.
Those pieces.
Those pieces, and there are some. So then, we will repair the walls and paint the room, and I have a local person who's willing to do that, and has given us a quote. We need to move and mount the safe, so I have National Safe, if you haven't given me a quote for that. I found a local carpet installer will repair the carpet. The big, the big safe has to have the carpet out from under it. The big, the big safe has to have the carpet out from under it, or as the door swings, it basically buckles the carpet. So he will have to cut some carpet away to put the new, to put the safe in the newer location. Then he'll have to repair where it currently is, plus the little safe is currently bolted to the floor, so he'll have to repair that. He's bringing that in at just eight dollars. He's like, it's, it's a couple hours' work, I'll come in and just get it done for you. So I was pleased with that. The data line installation and electrical work, so that's the data line for the printer, that's the moving of the phone line for the fax machine, and we're doing some adjustments in terms of shifting some data lines around, under the desks, so that we don't have lines crisscrossing everywhere. If you've got the electrician coming in anywhere, anyway, this is the perfect time to get those things cleaned up and put in the right places. That will be done by Allied Building Services, which is our facilities company. We will install addition, an additional phone. We already have the phone in the house, so that will be done by our IT staff at no additional cost. They will just essentially go in and plug it in, we're good. We will move and replace a computer in the other office. So basically, when Adrian moves into this office, she's going to bring her computer with her, and then we're going to hire a new employee who won't have a computer. So we budgeted to put a computer back in that office. We need a cabinet and a fax machine for the postage meter, this new location. The one that we picked out is actually less than that, but I went ahead and put that in there in case we find something that, that we do like a little bit better. But we've got one in mind that is actually less expensive than that. And then I put in a little bit of a contingency fund for unexpected repairs and costs because we all know when you do anything in your house, and even more so in a building this size, something comes up that isn't what you thought it was when you move a cabinet, break the wall, whatever. So I put in a little bit of a cushion in there to make sure that we had a little bit of money. But this is significantly under budget for what I thought it was going to be. So any questions, comments, concerns about this one?
When and where are you going to work while they're doing this?
Okay. So here's, there is, it's a little bit up in the air. I have several possibilities. It all depends on when the furniture arrives. So once the board has approved it, I need to order the furniture. There's four to six weeks' lead time on the furniture. That would bring it in right about the time we're thinking we're going to be doing the audit. We're not going to do this during the audit, that's just not going to happen.
That's good.
So I think we're going to push it into early April. We do have, at that particular time, some people who potentially might be on vacation because that would be spring break, so that might make it a little bit easier where we're going to house people while this work is taking place. So we're hopeful that early April might be when it would happen because that would allow us to do some of this while some people aren't even here to witness the dust.
And a place for...
And a place for the poor person to get stuck behind doing all the work, but it'll be easier to, to find a place for her to work, so.
So that's our timeline.
Our timeline, I'm, I'm hopeful, fingers crossed, would be early April, but we all know it just depends on all of this and, and getting people in and out. So the company that is doing the demolition is the same company that is doing the furniture, so they will come in, do the demolition, will bring in the painter and all, and the carpet person or whatever, they can come in and sweep through and do those things. And they'll, they'll come in and install the furniture. I'm hopeful that we can just go ahead and have the electrical work done ahead of time. All that that would require would be moving a cabinet out of there, and I think if we emptied one of them and get, and get it out of there, that we could move the other one over, and they would be able to do that electrical work in advance of all of this.
Who coordinates all this? Are you coordinating all this?
I am in this one. It all depends. This one is all me, and that's how we're keeping it, so keeping the price down. If we were to use library design associates, they would do all this choreography, but it would probably be twice as expensive, which is, which is why I decided I... We have other big projects on the docket.
And like you said, this is not library-specific.
This is not library...
This is a, a workspace, an office.
And not only is it not library-specific, but this one is for, for staff, and I would rather spend that money on some of the projects we have planned upfront for the public. Couple of the other things that we have planned would be an overhaul of this meeting room. And our, and our teen librarian is really hoping that we will be able to find the money for her to do some nice things in the teen space. And I told her if I could keep the price on, down on this project, that I might be able to talk the board into letting her do a little of that this year as well. So we've got some really nice things.
Well, I'm pleased we're using local people to facilitate this.
It required several phone calls, but I was really excited when I found local people who were like, oh, yeah, because they're right here. I'm hoping that means they can breeze in, get it done, and get out, and it'll be easier than trying to bring in contractors from further away, well, I can't come until a week from Saturday or whatever, so. So I'm hopeful. Fingers crossed.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
See how much prayer might be...
You've got, you sent an extra file cabinet, you're going to move that into your bathroom or...
The extra file cabinet, I'm not really sure what we would do. I suspect that we would probably see if another library would need it. That's, that's actually not an uncommon way for us. We have acquired many nice things from other libraries, and in reciprocity, we often, when we have something that we no longer need offered up to other libraries.
Share.
Keep it in, keep it in the family, so to speak. Yeah. Okay. So, yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve the administrative office update.
Seconded. Is there a second?
That was me.
Got it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the administrative office update project as presented. Any other comments or questions have come to you? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you for all the work, because I know that that took a lot of phone calls. Down to something that's fun, number seven.
Okay. Number seven. In collaboration with the Clarkston Cultural Arts Council, the Detroit Institute of Arts is working on bringing another session of their Inside Out program to the Clarkston community. This is an outreach effort in which the DIA installs several reproductions of art around town for the community to enjoy for about four months. I believe this will be the fourth or fifth round of the Inside Out that has visited Clarkston. The library has participated twice in the past, posting a reproduction of Girl in Laurel by Winslow Homer mounted on a post along the safety path on the north side of the building, and Boot Sanset Sunset by John Randall Brett mounted on the outside of the wall on the east side of the building, the wall facing the driveway, so right on the other side of that wall over there. Participating was very easy. The DIA covered all costs to install the piece, then paid to remove the piece at the end of the run, and made all repairs to restore the property to its original state. Clarkston Cultural Arts and the DIA has inquired if the library would be willing to participate again this spring. This time, they would like to mount a piece on a post in the lawn on the south side of the parking lot, near the entrance to the story walk, that, that is a collaboration between the library and Clarkston schools. They would like to select a piece that would coordinate with the story walk, which will feature an Eric Carle book at that time. As last time, the DIA will pay for the installation and all repairs when the piece is removed. Because this location is at the edge of the property and may actually be installed on land belonging to the school, I acquired permission from the school administration office and the CCS facilities director for a post to be mounted in this area as part of this project. This is a very popular program in Clarkston. When we participated in 2015, we had to work very hard to secure a piece of art for the library. We were excited to participate again in 2017. The board was very supportive of this project in 2015 and 2017, and we had an excellent experience with this program in terms of installation, repair, positive patron and staff feedback, et cetera. The paperwork has not yet been presented, but this project often requires a quick turnaround of signed documentation, so I am seeking board approval of the project that would allow me to execute the approval on their timeline to assure we don't miss our opportunity to participate. I will keep the board informed as the process proceeds, and will seek further board input and permission if the proposal changes significantly in a way that we have not experienced with this project in the past. So in this case, they're doing a post. The one that was, was a little bit more nervous for me was when they were actually mounting it to the story. But they did a lovely job. They did very, very nice work repairing the mortar and all of that, so.
It's such a great program.
It is a great program.
And I love the idea of putting it at the, at the beginning of the story walk because then children will be seeing it and, and to expose children to that kind of artist.
That was actually Denise Couture, who is the Clarkston Cultural Arts Director, that was her idea. And, and I said, well, there's a couple of things I have to get secured for. First thing I had to do was ask the school because there's, that property line is a little bit, I'm not sure exactly where it is. And I called them, they're like, oh, no problem, not. And I have that as an email and writing that we may do that, so wherever they put it, they're good with it. But I am very excited when she said that they would connect to the story walk. They already wanted to know what the book was so they could think ahead. I don't know if they'll take something that's similar in artistic style or similar in theme.
Either way.
Either way.
It can be worked into the, the story walk, and, and it exposes children to...
We're very excited that we've been...
Yeah.
It's the first year I had to kind of beg. I did a lot of whining, but I got a piece of art. And then the next year, because we were so easy to work with, the next year, the next time they did it, they were excited, and this was the same way. She's like, so you want to do it again? Like, I got to get board approval, but I'll get right on it, so.
And having it in place when they come to us, I think is an excellent one of those.
Yeah, I do, too.
It tends to happen really fast, and that first year was a little bit hairy because I think I was able to slide it in as part of a special meeting in order to get it done. Because had we not approved it in a timely fashion, they were going to give that piece of art that they've been holding for us to somebody else, because they had to have signed to work at a certain time, and so this would be very helpful.
Because they've got their, their red tape.
They've got, they've, and it's a huge program, and we are not the only community. They do multiple communities at a time, and so, yeah.
But it's a great, I think it's a great program. When they started doing it, I loved seeing it done, and I love it coming here, so.
We've been very blessed by the DIA. When they were doing the, the special program where they were busing people to the DIA from, for Oakland County, it was here three or four times, and we had two busloads the one[1719.86]